Pandit Chahar Lal Nehru believed that the children of today will make the India of tomorrow. The way we bring them up will determine the future of the country. With this thought in mind, we begin today's very special Children's Day episode of Muskan, an initiative of Prabha Khitan Foundation, presented by Sri Cement Limited and Education for All Trust. Prabha Khitan Foundation is an organisation based in Kolkata, founded by late Dr. Prabha Khitan, dedicated to socio-cultural welfare and humanitarian causes. The foundation's initiative Muskan aims at popularising heritage, literature, and culture nationwide among children and young adults by weaving it into formal and informal education through various student activities. Some of the ways adopted to do this are cultural programmes, storytelling sessions, theatre, dance, music and art, which are organised via collaborations with our national and international associations and institutes, both Pan-India and overseas network of schools, educational and art institutions. Today, we have a very special guest with us, rapper Fayago. Fayago is the winner of Best Hip-Hop Act at the VH1 Sound Nation Awards. He has performed over 300 times in the subcontinent at all major festivals, including Bacardi and its Seven Weekender, Zero Festival and others. He is one of the pioneers of Indian hip-hop and the creator of the anthem of the North East, Logical Guy and other songs, garnering over 8 million views on YouTube. Fayago is the face of Puma X Big Sean clothing line, is associated with brands like G-Star Row, DC Shoes, Airtel Marathon, 101 India, Hero Bikes, Viacom 18 and others. Fayago's story has inspired a few plot points in the movie Gullyboy. The rapper is an inspiration to a generation of rappers in India, especially in East and North East India. Fayago has created the genre folk rap and is now ready for his ninth India tour called Fayago Mr. Rapper India Tour 2021. I would now request my young audience to groove and enjoy today's session, but before I hand it over to Fayago, an earnest request to all of you young people here, please keep your videos on unless the performer sees the faces, he or she doesn't feel encouraged, doesn't feel happy, I think, right Fayago? You need to see the faces, right? So, here we go Fayago, over to you.
Okay. Hi, so my name is Fayago, my real name is Vikramjit Sen and it's really good to meet you guys. I grew up in Dhaji Ling in boarding school and then I moved to the UK and now I'm a rapper for 10 years in India and I mainly rap in English and hopefully, you know, when you get a little older and you start going to festivals, you will come to one of my gigs. I remember in school on Children's Day, teachers used to get together and make like these concerts for us and we were like the bosses that day, you know, just sitting and watching them. And it's funny how life takes a full circle and now I'm supposed to perform and then there's a bunch of kids on my screen, you know, like time moves so fast. I guess what I'm trying to say is do what you want, do what you love because it moves so fast. Like I don't know how 20 years pass by and I'm on this side of the fence. Without delaying any further, I picked four or five songs that I'm gonna do called Folk Rap. So this is what I do, I take folk instruments and I try to make rap in it so that, you know, from India to the world, they come to know about our tradition. The first song is called Why and it's dedicated to the youth because you're the future of India, you're the decision makers. This song is called Why and it talks about all the problems we have with the country, with the world right now. If you hear the instruments, it's a do-tara from Shilong and I've used a little bit of folk percussion from Bengal. I hope you like this song, it's called Why, goes out to you guys, Happy Children's Day. Why my generation blind to the cries of Syria? Journalism high on the lies of the media? What happened in Libya? Remain in Libya. Why did all the money disappear from India? People more interested in the plight of Nimitz? Stalking some of the models from Justin Bieber's new video? Why don't the people in power empower some simple guys? I'm guessing you wouldn't sympathise, would you? Why do people feel the need to hide behind makeup? Big implants just for the sake of politicians trying to act like they're on the planet? When they can't even smell planet, damn it? I mean, why my generation so addicted to the internet? Why my generation so afraid of getting intimate? Why waste time when you know you're gonna die? I, just another guy singing why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Oh why, oh why? Why, oh why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me? Like why, like why? Why does every girl in mine end up leaving the country? Why are people laughing at you when you stand up for something? Why does no one give a... Of all the glaciers getting thinner and the oceans getting nasty with the flash trip we dump it? People more interested in Khaleesi? John more interested in the video giver? About the song, why's it bottled with juice? What's going on? Why isn't Himadash on the front page instead of Messi? Why are FC and FB all we care about? People scroll through their whole lives till they're about? A hundred something old when it's probably disconcerting to be posting your pictures, updating your whereabouts? Why my generation so addicted to the internet? Why my generation so afraid of getting intimate? Why waste time when you know you're gonna die? I, just another guy singing why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me? This is why when you guys sing along, but you don't have audio, so you don't... Next time. Why, oh why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me? Why, oh why, oh why? Can you tell me? Why, oh why, oh why? Yo. Why do stupid guys end up risking their lives? Working for some politician who don't need their advice? Why call him silver server when they asking for bribes? Why buy a new Mercedes when you can't even drive? Why do CEOs get to be the ones to decide? How my country spend its money and my climate is the tide? Why do I get to grow up in a lie? I, just another guy asking why? Why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Oh why, oh why? Why, oh why, oh why? Can you tell me why, oh why? Can you tell me? Why, oh why, oh why? Can you tell me? Why, oh why, oh why? Oh why? Why my generation blind to the cries of Syria? Journalists from lies, lies on the paper? What happened in Libya? Remain in Libya? Why did all the money disappear from India? Hey, hey, represent all my life? Represent Dhaji Ling? How you feeling, how you feeling? Okay, so that song's called Why, if you like that, it's on YouTube, like a lyric video and I'm gonna move on quickly to the next song. This is more political, this was sung by my friend in Shilong called Melody Crab. It's called Someday and it's about a bigger, brighter, happier future, which is wishful thinking. Wishful thinking is when we wish that something happens in a certain way and manifestation is when you wish so hard that it actually comes true. This is wishful thinking and it's manifestation. It's called Someday, I hope you like this song. It was one of my first songs, I got my awards for this song, it's my baby, I hope you like it. Someday, I will be yours and you'll be mine. Don't let this distance, all this time decide. Alright, you're the only guy in my life, my life, my life. Let's go! Hey! How you feeling today? Happy Children's Day! Oh, yeah, listen! Someday, everything is a mess, everybody obsessed, people stuck. Not a single case, when they didn't get away, people embraced, no colour, no race. Except their own leaders own their share of the place, but they got no taste. Someday, I look out on my window, it'll be great, it'll be loud, I see these kids living up to the bridge. They're like a minute from my house, but my neighbor's gonna party all night. So am I, so are you? In a place like this, you find there's millions lost, but there ain't no rules. Someday, my country has been 377, that's police? But no why, women living on wives having rich and cool, immigrants are not. What's great to drop these parents fools? They're praising science, manly and distinct art. Someday, I'm seeing you around, still on your phone, what's happening? Hundreds of them online, yet you on your own, what's happening? Let's hope for the future, as long as the teacher confronts what he's been doing all these years. Read, learn, teach, earn. Someday, I will be yours and you'll be mine. Don't let this distance, all this time decide. Alright, you're the only girl in my life, my life, my life. Someday, it's broken heart, we're left inside. And if we try, we can survive. I lost my life. Girl in my life, my life. Someday. Last series of, then we'll do one more. Hey, hey. Someday, we learn a lesson, no message, no blessing. There's only room for cash and the miles overdressing. That's how we built the team, rapid money, we can see it. Gods represented by the money making free, eh? Someday, it'll all be great, TV gonna write your fate. Internet gonna give you drama, you gonna blame it all on karma. Your friends go back, there's no difference you have. The same old practice, stimulating your philosophy. Someday, everybody's so high, everybody's so fake, politicians say, don't equalize. What they can take unless there's war? In which case, they be so bad, knocking on doors. God say change back to what we had, huh? Someday, when the witch get away early night, they just alive. They got their share of the pain, and they got their pride, huh? And I guess it's time, and I guess it ain't fine. Then even you, rest one, let this hit the light, nice try. I will be yours and you'll be mine. And we'll be fine. I lost my life, you're the only. My life, my life, my life. Someday, these parents will hate their kids and kids their parents. We can all go running to leaders, but we won't get no clearance. My city breaks into mold, lights here collecting fungus. Are people ready to move? Our problems are humongous. Someday, it'll all be great, we can all run away from the rehab. Someday, there's gonna be a rule we gotta get every single day. Someday, these kids be asking, this what you call harassing? Just so we clear, that day is finally here. Someday, I will be yours and you'll be mine. Don't let this, 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 all this time decide. Alright, you're the only girl in my life, my life, my life. Someday, it's broken heart, we're left inside. And if we try, we can survive. I lost my life. Girl in my life, my life, my life. But success keeps on coming, not a single case. When the India went, people in France, no colour, no race. Except they, they should have a case, they got no taste. Someday, I'm seeing you around, still on your phone, what's happening? Hundreds of them online, yet you on your own, what's happening? I lost my life. Girl in my life, my life, my life. Thank you so much, thanks a lot, this has been good. I don't know if you're hearing, is the beat okay? Is the vocal okay? Is the beat too loud? Or is it fine? The instrumentals, yeah? I hope you guys are being able to hear what's going on. Yes, I can see a few heads shaking. Beat is okay, rap is okay, should I go louder or is it cool? Yeah, should I go softer? It's okay? Okay. So... I'm from Bengal, but I didn't grow up here, especially in Kerala. So, I lost my roots, my connection with my roots, which is really important. It's important where you come from, who you are, where you belong to. So, I tried to make a lot of music using the local sound and vowel instruments and all of this. So, this next song is called Logical Guy, it's got four million views on YouTube. So Rajneesh Amitra was in the video. We shot it last year in ITC, it's one of my biggest hits. If you like the song, go watch it after this on YouTube, it's called Logical Guy. And it goes something like this. Yeah. (Singing) Let's go, beep! Yeah. So this is romantic, yeah, it's love scene, yeah. (Singing) One day, I'll just pull up in front of your place. I know your dad is a fool in my face, but I'm on the track, couple of ties. Cause I like to win by the end of the race. I know I'm a hustler, so what if I blow? I know that I'm empty, so what if I? I ain't gonna lie, don't even know why, I can't get you out of my mind. If you near me, you know I'm a logical guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a sensible guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a logical guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a sensible guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a catfish and die, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a logical guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. Come on to the story. One day, I'll just shut down the knack in the phone, back in the back, hiking alone. Back in the jungle, a shack in a home, cracking the code, and back on the road. Feeling the feeling, my feet on the ground, feeling the feeling, my feet on the ground. When I'm in the farm, my breathing is calm, the scene of this story would stop. If you near me, you know I'm a logical guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a sensible guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a catfish and die, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a sensible guy, but I... One day, I'll just pull up in front of your place. I know your dad is a fool in my face, but I'm on the track, couple of ties. Cause I like to win by the end of the race. I know I'm a hustler, so what if I blow? I know that I'm empty, so what if I? I ain't gonna lie, don't even know why, I can't get you out of my mind. If you near me, you know I'm a logical guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a sensible guy. If you near me, you know I'm a logical guy, but I say what I like when I'm high. If you near me, you know I'm a sensible guy, but I say what I like when I'm... If you near me, you know I'm a catfish and die, but I say what I like when I'm... If you near me, you know I'm a logical guy, but I say what I like when I'm... Thank you so much, that's Logical Guy. This is really new for me, performing through a screen. Cause I don't know if you guys are vibing or kind of like enjoying. You know, if it was live and I was at your school and you could come screaming and I could be screaming with you guys and then we could take photos and sell these and stuff. But because of the pandemic, we've all had to adjust and you guys have been studying from home. I've been being a rapper from home, which is really strange because there's no spotlight, there's no platform, there's no stage. But yeah, I hope this works out. I wanna do another song. So, there's no way of unmuting everyone, right? Because if they could give me the chorus, that's not a possibility, yeah? Because I wanna see these guys rap a little bit, you know, like, or sing, it's not possible?
I mean, I can give them the permission to unmute themselves if you want and they can, those who want to unmute themselves, they can.
Guys, if you unmute yourself, you have to let me do the rap part and only join in the chorus, yeah?
Good afternoon, sir.
Okay?
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, sir.
Hello, sir.
Can you say me the song?
So that's what's gonna happen. So if you want, I'm sorry, you're muted Fayago. Yeah, so if I unmute them, then it will be...
Guys, can you hear me right now? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
If she unmutes you, they promise not to say anything until the chorus comes, yeah? Just be on hold, on standby. Good afternoon, I'm telling you good afternoon so that you don't have to tell it back to me. Really good afternoon, cool afternoon, unforgettable afternoon. She's gonna unmute you guys, don't say anything. When the time comes, you have to join me on the chorus, so it's really simple. There's a band called Queen who sang a song called We Will, We Will Rock You. Do you know that song? You know that song, right? We will, we will rock you, rock you, you know that song? It's just four lines for you guys. We will, we will rock you, okay? And the rest of it I'll do. So when the time comes, I put the thumbs up, when you see the thumbs up, join me in the chorus. If you don't know the chorus, it's okay, just join in with the others, okay? I'm trusting you and asking her to unmute you. Please, don't say anything, yeah? I trust you guys and you have to like put your trust in me. Let it go, I'm switching off the song, okay? Let's do this. I've never had an encore live.
Isn't that...
Okay, guys, so this one, this one's called We Will Rock You and this is my version. So I'm doing Bangla, Hindi and Nepali and English rap. I want you guys to join in.
Hello?
Only in the chorus, only in the chorus, not right now, yeah? Only in the chorus. I'll tell you when to join in. Alright, let's go, let's go, are you ready? Let's go.
Yes, sir.
So the chorus is simple, it's we will, we will rock you. But you can't say it, you'll have to scream it, okay? Wait.
So this song has some...
Ready? Are you ready? Nepali. Monster in the bamboo, pizza in the gold jeep. Motherfucker, money stay on payroll like a royalty. Little napster, lack, fucking, something, coffee. Sally, I'm not optimistic, that will be appropriate.
We will, we will rock you.
One more than, one more than.
We will, we will rock you.
We will, we will rock you.
Tere song battle rap, karna mujhe ek baat. Tere song ek baat, versus mere ek baat. Karle tu de yari sari, I don't care, bro. Some of my balls drunk, I just pulled up at your gig, bro.
We will, we will rock you.
We will, we will rock you.
Bangla. Aha, kede kalibede, rasta balalam ami. Ma, kede jahoglede, rachonalam ami. Kiti te dikte, velam prokon baad, liseke ami, takho keke, dimon tajke, kano dami, ami.
We will, we will rock you.
We will, we will rock you.
Alright, louder, please.
We will, we will rock you.
We will, we will rock you.
Okay, guys, thanks so much for inviting me here and now we'll just chill, we'll talk, we'll do a bit of discussion and I'll tell you my thoughts for your stuff and you can tell yours. Nice to watch you coming. Children's Day. Never done something like this before, super cool. Thanks for inviting me, thank you for organising and...
So, yeah, I'm not able to hear you, so can you say like louder?
Fayago, you're muted and... Yeah.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, guys, so coming back to me, my name is Fayago and I've been doing this for 10 years and I used to be really nerdy in school, like if I came first or second, it was okay. But if I came third, I would cry and I would smash things, I'd get really angry with myself because I had to come first or second. And then after school, so everybody said, ye toh like CA parne ka laa hai. So they sent me to learn CA, then I said I can't do CA. So they sent me to learn marketing in England and halfway through the course, I thought I wanted to become a rapper and a musician. And my dean was like, if you step out of that door, you are not coming back to college, you are never allowed inside. And I stepped out and I was so scared, I couldn't tell my parents this and I risked everything and then... Five years later, I sent my dean an email saying, how do you like me now? And that was me on the cover of GQ, me on the cover of Vogue, me in VH1, me holding the awards, me doing tours. And my teacher was really, really encouraging. My teacher said, hey, you know, you followed your dreams, congrats. If you want, you can come and finish your graduation at any point. So now I'm saving up enough, I'll go and I'll finish my graduation because it's really important to do your studies as well. And yeah, so that's my story, man, like I wanna know some of you guys. I wanna know, does anybody have any questions for me? I think there's a way of raising hands and then someone can let you talk to me. Don't tell me good afternoon, anything, anything cool, tell me cool, babe, I wanna know about you. I wanna know your story. Any questions? Anybody wanna say it?
There's a raised hand from Nishan. I'll unmute them.
Sir, so my question was like, like how did you got the thought to become a rapper?
One second, who's saying this? How do I see you with the...
Oh, okay, fine, so you need to change your mood to speak, I mean more to speak of your back.
Okay, okay. Hi, hey, what's your name?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. My name is Nishan.
Nishan, okay. Nishan, to answer your question, I did not know that I wanna be a rapper. I wanted to be a musician and I was making my music and I went through some personal problems in my family and my home and my life and I was about to hit rock bottom, you understand rock bottom, like the worst possible scenario. I was about to give up and then instead I thought, why not write about it? So, from childhood, I used to write, so I wrote all that. Then I had all this anger in my life because of all my personal problems and I went and took that anger out on stage and people liked that. They were like, wow, you know, KPI has confidence, but it wasn't confidence, it was just my anger. And slowly, after a while, it just became nice because I can wake up whenever and eat whatever, I don't have to care and I don't have to be who or that, you know? So I started liking this profession because it was fun, it was something I was born to do and I love the stage, I love music. Thanks a lot for your question. Does anybody have anything that they wanna ask for?
Yes, that's Raj, Rajbir.
Hello?
Hi Rajbir.
Yeah, if you weren't a rapper, what would you be?
I would be a chef, I'm not kidding, man, I can really cook. Like I love cooking, like I love experimenting with strange food that nobody else wants to have. The only problem is the cutting feeling makes a name on that, I really need a sous chef, man. Like if somebody feels all the garlic and chops all the vegetables, I can cook, I love cooking. But yeah, so to answer your question, if I wasn't a rapper, I would have been like a experimental chef, doing weird things. Like I came up with chicken puchka like 20 years ago and now they're selling it, man. Back then, they thought I was crazy, so yeah, chef, definitely. How about you, what do you wanna do?
I don't know about that yet.
Okay, fair enough, that's cool, man, you have like 20, 30 years to figure it out, that's cool.
Yeah.
Anybody else got any questions that they wanna ask?
Yes, there is jazz or ches, cheslan, if I'm correcting.
Hi, sir, I wanna ask that who inspired you to become a rapper? And who, you know, like supported you to become a rapper?
That's a really nice question. So first, I would say my biggest support was my mom and dad because my dad was India's first football commentator. So he had a similar life, he used to talk in the mic, he used to travel like me. So he and my mom really supported me. But inspiration wise, I would say Bob Dylan, Kanye West, Ed Sheeran, AR Rahman, a whole bunch of people that I love musically. I didn't really like rap to start with, I loved slow music and meaningful music. I think my biggest inspiration, and this would be really arrogant to say to you, is myself. And I'm not being arrogant here, but you know, everybody comes and goes, like relationships, partners, friends. You are your own best friend. So if I don't wake up every morning and inspire myself to do what I do, then I'll lose because it's very competitive, there's so many people here and... So yeah, I think the younger me is one of my biggest inspirations because he made me who I am today, yeah? Thanks for that, good question. Anybody else wanna say hi or just anything?
Hi, Parvati.
Hi, Parvati.
Hello sir, my name is Parvati, uh, I just wanna know something sir, uh, so this is something I saw outside, I just wanna know if you can, uh, like, if I give you a word, can you rap with that word?
Yeah, please, let's do that, wait, uh, tell me the word.
It's Gotham.
Sorry?
Gotham, sir, uh, from DC.
Gotham, Gotham?
Yes, sir.
Just add things. Hey, freestyle, rapping off my mind, rapping on time, I can do this all day, all night, uh, yeah, drop the beat where the beat at, okay, now, uh. Hey, okay, now, shit, the beat's still going, buddy, uh, uh. Okay, now we got the beat loud, I can freestyle, I can do this all day, all night, uh, yeah, Parvati, uh, yeah, she gave me a word like hard to say, uh, yeah, it's part of me, uh, yeah, she told me to go with the word, uh. Wait, what was your word again, Parvati? Gotham, Gotham, uh, yeah, yeah, I'm the dark knight, I'm from Gotham, uh, uh, yeah, yeah, I'm the dark knight, I'm from Gotham, and you can never catch me because I caught him, uh, if everything you want, I got him, uh, yeah, yeah. You can see the stars, I saw them, uh, I can be this, I can take a chance because I bought him, uh, yeah, give me another word, Parvati, throw it at me. Let's go, any word, uh.
Um, let's do The Avengers.
What was that, what was that, what was that?
The Avengers, sir.
The Av- Avengers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now from bottom, we move to Avengers. Uh, last night, I was on the bender, uh, yeah, that means I went out, I went out for so long, I came back home with yo, it was like five o'clock in the morning, and the sun was yawning, uh, Avengers. Yeah. Uh, go with COVID, take some vaccine cleansers, then sir, you will be clean of your misery, standing on your dream of your liberty, uh, yeah, I can do this all night, Parvati, you gotta keep throwing words at me because then I'm the one that don't know where to go. Okay, I, I, I'll be honest, like freestyling in the afternoon is so hard, man, I can freestyle, but you know, some needs to said, and like you need to chill, like, I'm in the middle of like you caught me off guard, uh, but I, I can try doing this, I'm more of a pen and paper guy, man, I can freestyle, like rapping off my mind, rapping on time. Uh, it's just freestyle is so hard to do unless you have like a certain mood, like every rapper will tell you this, unless you're in the zone, and i- it's so hard because I have to censor myself, because you guys aren't eighteen yet, so, so I have to think and talk, um, yeah, anybody got any other questions? I will freestyle and put it up later this week on my YouTube, yeah.
Yeah, there's your drums.
Hello sir, I have some question for you, so would you like, would you might answer it for me? So my first question is, uh, would you like to, would you, would you watch anime?
Yes, I love anime, I really love anime, I, I watch a lot of anime, um, I like Studio Ghibli and the older ones because I'm so old, you know, and.
Do you like to watch Naruto?
Naruto, yeah, I used to watch, uh, back in the day, um, now I'm watching, uh, more of the action anime, like Ghost in the Shell and all of that, or even like, um, uh, Death Note and stuff, it's a bit more adult, but yeah, that's the kind of anime I like. I love Japanese culture, Japanese food, Japanese everything, I, I could like live in Japan and not be bored for the rest of my life.
I have another, another question.
What's your favorite?
My favorite one is Naruto Shippuden.
Nice, okay, I can tell it by your costume and yellow and your room is kind of bright, okay, cool, man. So maybe you can do something in anime, right? Like you have to do what you love to do, so if you like anime, you can start drawing from now, you can try, uh, vocals, you can try all kinds of things to get into anime.
Or even start cosplaying also.
Sorry?
Or we can even start cosplaying also.
Yes, or you can cosplay now, you can do all kinds of stuff, I, I do a bit of cosplay sometimes, uh, I, uh, dress up, yeah, this year we did Squid Games obviously, but that was not cosplay, um. Anyone else with any questions that you guys might have or just wanna say hi, um.
Sir, my question was, what inspired you to start music? Like, what made you do music?
It's a collection of things, uh, I would say, like right from childhood, I was on stage, so I was doing theater, drama, debate and stuff, um. It's, it's always oppo- opportunity and want, so I wanted to do something creative ever since I was young and I really wanted to go on stage because you know, when crowd is not there, I don't know who to be, every performer has this problem, when, when you're not on stage, then you don't know who to be, it's like a clown, when the clown goes home, wipes off his makeup, takes off his nose, he doesn't know who to be, he becomes very serious until he goes on stage again, so I had that performer syndrome, like that scratch, you know, that itch, like I have to do something crowd related. But I didn't know it was music, um, then in England, I stayed there for five years, so I saw people like Nas, Damien Marley, uh, you know, Kanye, Jay-Z, all the, all the people I admire right now, and I was like, I wanna do what they do. And, uh, I never had the courage to, to, to go on stage and do it, so I used to make beats. But like I said earlier, like, uh, I had a huge plethora of personal family problems and, um, when life is hard at you, you can either give up or you can use that for something, so I took all that pain, all that tragedy and, and I thought now or never, let me just make music, and people liked it, so there was, it was like, okay, I, maybe I can do this for one year. And then in that one year, it started growing big, I started touring, and then I was like, okay, maybe I can do this for five years, and now it's been ten years. So yeah, um, it's a bit of opportunity and a bit of, uh, circumstances in your life. Yeah. Hi, Ayush.
Uh, yes, sir, sir, I had a question that, uh, did you have this thing called the stage fear, this? Uh, and if you had, how did you, hmm, eh, come over it?
Okay, so in class one, when I joined school, I was six years old and they had sent me for elocution, drama and debate, and I was really, really scared, so I went for class one elocution and, uh, my trousers, I made them like really, really wide, this wide, so that, um, when my legs shake on stage, no- nobody could see it because it's a big fan, you know? And, uh, class one and class two, my leg used to shake, but I, luckily I'm very dark brown, and I was darker when I was younger. So when you get red, nobody knows, you know, you have to look at the tip of the ears or something because my face is still brown. So nobody could tell like he's nervous or something, my legs were taken care of because of that, uh, thing I told you. I used to put chalk marks so that I don't move from that spot, and even if it shakes, the band won't be seen. So that was class one and class two, class two, my teacher told me, hey, if you're ever nervous, okay, I shouldn't say this briefly because you guys are not eighteen yet, but I mean, this is what my teacher told me as well, he said, imagine the whole crowd in the underwear, you know, one yard and all this, and then you'll be like laughing and then you won't get nervous. And, uh, you know, imagine them to be ducks or whatever, imagine them to be clowns, just don't think of a serious crowd, you know? Make some fun in your head, make fun of them, so I started doing that in class two and I've never had stage fright. Now I have the opposite of stage fright, which is real life fright, like when my friends tell me to go out or hang out or something, then I'm like, I don't know how to be, uh, I'm not very confident unless I'm on stage, I don't know, like this, this guy Vic, Fyago, Vic Sen, Vikram D, he lives at home. This guy is really shy, and then you got the Fyago guy on the stage and does this stuff, he doesn't have stage fright, he is born for that stuff. So yeah, I still get scared, I get scared if a really pretty girl comes up to me and says hi, of course I'll get scared. Or, uh, maybe if, I don't know, if, um, people start talking about my bills and my taxes and those adult things, I get really scared because adulting is so hard, but yeah, I don't get scared of stage anymore, I love that and it's, uh, it's, it's over now, no more getting scared, thanks for that question. Um, so, yes, Parvati. Hey, I like your sweater, man, dude, I, uh, if you can check on Google, I'm wearing this exact thing in my concert camouflage sweater. Nice, I like it, okay, so what's your question?
Sir, my question was, when you were a kid, which was your favorite anime?
When I was a kid, which was my favorite anime? Okay, see, uh, Venkatesh, right? Venkatesh, I'm very, very old. So I'm thirty-two years old, so when we were young, we had this channel called Cartoon Network, but it had only English cartoons in it. And it was very, very old cartoons like Flintstones, Jetsons, Courage the Cowardly Dog, Centurions, I know I sound like all your uncles and stuff, but these were the favorite, uh, Tom and Jerry, Scooby Doo, these were the cartoons that we grew up on, you know, uh, I'm talking about twenty years ago. Yes, hi, Cindy, Yado.
Cindy, you have a question?
Eh? Cindy?
Yes, sir. Hello, sir, good evening, my name is Cindy Yado. Sir, my question is, how do you start to sing music?
How do I start to make music?
Yes, sir.
It's really easy, okay, I'm gonna check, I'm gonna show you guys, check it out, and I really want some of you to try this, okay? There is an app, it's called BandLab, BandLab, B A N D L A B, it's a free app, and I make my beats on my phone, like just on my phone, I make a simple kick and snare, very simple, and I try to make a song on it, see, this is the song I'm making right now, it's on my song, uh, this is basically what I do. It's very simple, it's very easy, you can try out making your own songs. That's the second instrument. That's the guitar, then I play the guitar on top. And wait for the drums, now I play the drums, I put it in the third one, look, now the drum will come, ready? And then you put some rap, and then you do some that, and then you make some that, and then you tell your life story, and hopefully it's not boring, and then you make a song. That's how you make a song, you just, it's so easy, you download apps, you get your kicks, your snare, you play an instrument if you want, you tell your mother to hip, hum a tune, record that tune and write on top of it, I think the hardest thing is to open your phone or your pen and paper, mostly your phone, you have this app called Notes, right, Notes? Go to Notes, go to a new note, and just write four lines about anything in your life, I am Cindy, yeah? If that's your first line, and I am feeling giddy, you know, um, but if you are with me, I will not be giddy, I don't know, man, like just anything, just write four lines, it can sound stupid, it doesn't matter, but write about your own life, the moment you have those four lines, you can think of any tune and make that a song. People are making songs at eight years old, people are making songs at five years old, so you guys have no excuse not to be YouTube star by now, we didn't have that chance when we were young, but you do. So you can write down whatever you want and you can put any tune to it, and yeah, it's really easy to make a song these days.
Okay, you wanna take up more questions or you wanna, uh, you know, sing a, I don't know, songs?
Okay, I think I'll just, uh, do one more song and then, uh, I guess it's bye for now, I'll come to your school someday, yeah, um. Can I, I'll just change my view back, seeing everybody, okay, yeah, this is good, wow, there's seven pages of people, what? Okay, that's cool. Hi, everybody, hey, um, so now I'm gonna go, so I guess I'm gonna do one more song and then I'll probably leave. Um, but this was really nice, and we should do this again, um, I wanna play you a really sentimental song about my life in the hills, so what I do is, I live for six months or one year sometimes, whenever I get off time, I go to the hills and I do my own organic farming, and I stay there and I write music, and I live like off bottle system, so you don't have to buy something in the village. You know, you grow some vegetables, you give it to your neighbor, they'll give you something in return, milk or something. So this is the kind of life that I really like living, and, uh, it's, it's organic, and, uh, the song is called Dreaming, and it's about that life, and I hope you like it, it's, uh, also sung by Akansha Rai, she's my friend from Delhi, and, uh, it goes something like this. I'm staring at the edge of the world sinking, and the lights don't stop drinking, when the music fades, when it's taken away, I love. I'm dreaming of a better life, I'm dreaming, everything's gonna be just, dreaming of a better life, I'm dreaming, everything's gonna be alright. One day I had a dream, I dream, I dream, I'm falling, I'm in a farm, I'm calm, I'm with my family, I'm sorted, I'm grilling lemon fish, me and my mates when it caught it. The best moments in life will never be recorded, ain't nothing more important than the battles we fought, but the scars need to heal, so I'm out here in the field, living life like a farmer, I don't want the drama, hoping I can find nirvana, conversing with the llama. One day I had a dream, I wake up as your father, I teach you how to win the world instead of being a model, I introduce you to Dylan West and all the colors, I compromise, you dream big, I even start, start up. Turn out way smarter, let you see the reason why you work harder, maybe you'll take me out to lunch up in the sky in Michana, or maybe you will be a velvet bride, who knows? I'm staring at the edge of the world sinking, and the lights don't stop drinking, when the music fades, when it's taken away, I love. I'm dreaming of a better life, I'm dreaming, everything's gonna be just, dreaming of a better life, I'm dreaming, everything's gonna be alright. One day I had a dream, I gave up on the cigarette, not because of anything, but just because I'm sick of it, my mind isn't bickering, my body isn't shivering, for the first time I feel good, not sure how I got rid of it, I'm stronger every second of every hour, come to think of it, feeling like I'm reborn, this time around is different. I may use my energy to be a better citizen, substitute cholesterol with vitamin, you know? One day I had a dream, I'm sitting on a park bench, feeding chickens, energized by the time the truck ends, living out my life reminiscent in the past tense. Roll my ashes when I'm gone, don't put me in a casket, bad is finally over, I can take my mask off, wish I could have worried less, just wish I could have laughed more. Happy that life was more than I could have ever asked for, I wake up, I'm me again, I hit play, no fast forward. I'm staring at the edge of the world sinking, and the lights don't stop drinking, when the music fades, when it's taken away, I love. I'm dreaming of a better life, I'm dreaming, everything's gonna be just, dreaming of a better life, I'm dreaming, everything's gonna be alright. One day I had a dream, I dream, I dream, I'm falling, I'm in a farm, I'm calm, I'm with my family, I'm sorted. Alright guys, thanks a lot for coming, I don't even know, like this is really cool, I can't hear you guys, but it's like I can hear you guys, someone has her hand up. Um, my, uh, can we say hi to her? Or is it done? Um.
Hello, sir.
Hi.
Sir, I had a, I have a question like, uh, like, you are, you sing so good, so how, how?
Uh, okay, first, I can't sing, man, I can only rap, my vocals is quite bad, second, I think it's practice, like three hundred times, if you do the same thing, it's very easy, like I, I can't do Indian classical singing, like that's very difficult for me, but rap is very easy now because I've been doing it for ten years and you know, even if you do maths for ten years, you become good in maths, it's like, yeah, uh, but thanks, that, that's a huge compliment, thank you.
Uh, you have furthering more questions, only if you have furthering more questions.
Someone was raising their hand, but, uh, I mean, yeah, Soham, I mean, can we just see, because it's been a while that he's put his hand up and. Wait, so everybody with a hand, nobody is, the hand off?
Sir, sir, I have two questions, uh, so sir, number one, so when you create song, you film the video, you take time to edit it, and even you need to, when you rap, so, eh, like a few lines should be really, really cool. So sir, how much effort and time do you take to create a song and film the video, edit it? How much effort does it take?
Really intelligent question, I feel like I'm with the media, Soham, do you ever wanna enter politics or be a journalist maybe? Because you know, you will kill it as a journalist, that is insane, that's the kind of questions we get from Telegraph. I'll be really quick about answering this, uh, the song itself can take anything between five minutes and five days, if you have a good feeling and you put it into pen and paper, it can come in seconds, the main part of the song, someday, I will be yours, this just came to me like very soon. But then writing the verses and making it fine tuned and that stuff takes really long, the more time, the better. And, uh, same with the music video, I shoot my own videos, I edit them, and, uh, I, I'm always shooting and editing, so it takes me, uh, about a month from start to finish, and finding sponsors takes longer because money doesn't grow on trees, so then you have to find money and tell somebody, hey, I got a nice song, please give me money so that I can make the video, and if they say yes, then I go back, I contact a model, hey, will you be in my video? She agrees, so it's like very variant, but if you're serious about it as a career, then one month or two months is good for any kind of song, it's like a tree, the more you nurture it, the better it grows, you know, in the beginning stage, if you, uh, make the compost in the soil nice, then it'll grow really well, that's a really cool question, man, like I, I didn't expect that. Okay, uh, we have to wrap this up, uh, I see so many hands up and maybe we, Soham, you already got a chance, man, like you guys have not even said anything yet, but your question was nice, I liked it, uh, um, can, do we have, we have to leave, right, I think, uh?
No, because, I mean, there are many raised hands and they just wanna talk to you, absolutely, but you really.
If you guys have time, I have time, can we go really quick, yes, uh, Sad- Sadvi, please?
Sure, sure, I can, uh.
Yes, sir, so my question was, uh, what is your rapping speed?
My rapping speed? So, it depends on what I wanna do, like if, if she's really cool and I meet a girl at a club, then I'll go really slow, like, baby girl, look at me, hey, don't you see, but if it's a really angry guy and he wants to fight, I'm like, I'm a bit of a clinical phase, I'm in the middle of saying minimum wage, typical place, I gotta, I gotta pick up the pace. I was stuck in a clinical maze, I can go really fast, but that's only if I wanna give a headache to the other person and show off, because my arms are skinny, so I can't fight, I can only rap, so I go really fast like a machine gun, but sometimes I go really slow, like, it depends what you wanna shoot from your mouth, bullets or flowers or, it depends on the mood, yeah, next question, somebody, uh, Ahil, I think, I, I don't know, I, I can't choose, they'll choose, I guess. Um.
Yes, sir, good, good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening.
So my question is, sir, if some of them are just made up, how do you get inspiration for those songs?
If the songs are made up?
So if some of them are just made up, how do you get inspiration for those songs?
Um, all songs are made up, no, there's no like, uh, uh, it's, but if you're asking me how do I get inspiration? It's from different things, see, sometimes I wake up in the morning and if I have a really good breakfast, I'm inspired. Sometimes if somebody calls me, maybe after ten years, old friend, and he's like, hey, I just called to check if you're okay, then I feel inspired, like inspiration is very hard to predict, uh, you have chemicals in your brains called serotonin and dopamine and all these happiness hormones and stuff. So if somebody says something nice to you like today, like I've never done something like this, so if I see a hundred kids appreciating my music, like after this, when I go to studio, so this is my studio, when I go back to making beats, I'll be really inspired because this is inspiring, so it depends from day to day, sometimes you can go a month and you don't have any feelings and your, uh, your family is like, you know, doubting you and you don't get that inspiration for months and months, so I mean, this is a big question, like if I knew where to get inspiration, if it was selling at a store like Nike, I would be so happy because I could just go and get it, but now I have to, you know, go out there, break my heart, make a few promises, fight a little bit, get hurt, get broken, find inspiration, write my songs, then go back again, be happy, it's like a cycle of inspiration, thank you, nice question. Let's go for somebody.
We are just running out of time.
Okay, we're running out of time, let's see somebody who hasn't spoken yet, we'll just give them one, I think Srija Chakravarti, eight D, how about that? Yeah?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, sir, actually through, throughout the session, I had been thinking of several questions, but at last I have, uh, settled at one, that, are you going to write any song after going to your studio after this session, truly?
Do you think I am gonna make a lot of music, like I haven't been this alive in so long, pandemic has just been like killing and, and staying at home is boring. I went to Pune and performed, I performed in Calcutta, that was only twice, and then I was, I'm, I'm getting a beard and stuff, I didn't even care and I was getting bored and now I'm really happy, so yes, after this, I'm gonna go make some beats, make some new music, I'm making an Nepali song called Maya Lu, and it's a love song, so I'll be working on that now, thanks. Uh, let's go for Ahil, yeah, just once because he's there for a really long time and then I can't say no, man, he's just like.
Yes, sir, sir, myself, Ahilaman sir, and I have a doubt, sir, when did you make your first successful rap, sir?
First successful?
Where? Yeah, first successful.
App, like an app, I just made one.
Rap, rap, rap.
Oh, rap, okay, rap, um, first successful rap, I would say was in class six, so we studied in a boy's school, we didn't have girls. The girl's school was like really far away, and they only came marching once to town, and you had to find them while they're walking and go give the note. So it was a really scary thing because you have to bunk down from school and if you got caught, you get suspended, so I wrote a note and that was my first rap, it was really simple, it was just about smiling and her blue hair or some, something like that, like a very basic poem, I don't remember it, but that was my first rap, and she really liked it, she replied with flower petals inside that note and stuff, because back then we couldn't text each other, you guys are so lucky, man, you like her, you get texts, you like him, you get texts, for us, it's like let her lick hope and envelope me down over and hope that you don't get caught because teachers will take it away, so I think that was my first rap, like I, I wrote for somebody and, uh, they wrote back, so it was successful. Um, I don't remember the rap though, yeah, um, we have to cut it, yeah, now, and we're almost like we've spent this for one hour.
So I'll do a quick thank you. Fyago, you should have remembered that first rap of yours and written it down and framed it in your room, that should have been, you know, kind of, the kind of, uh, inspiration for all, all right, on behalf of the foundation, I would like to thank Fyago for holding such an interesting session for our young listeners and viewers, and informing them about this relatively new genre of music in India. I would also like to show my gratitude towards our presenter, Sri Cement Limited and Associate Education for All Trust. Last but not the least, I would also like to show appreciation towards our young viewers, without their enthusiasm, this session would not have been successful. The questions were wonderful and I think that brought a lot of, uh, life into the show, of course, your singing also was there, uh, stay well, stay safe, everybody, and goodbye.
Thank you for.
Thank you, Fyago, bye.